It's time to call this regular meeting of the Cyrus City School Board of Education to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Schiefer?
Here.
Mrs. Stone? Here. Could you all please stand and join the call, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commendations this evening, Mr. Campbell.
President Stone members of board, I'm happy to have two different groups tonight that we're providing commendations for. Actually, it was going to be three. Tonight was the elementary recognition night and when I got the list from the elementary administration that we're going to honor 56 elementary students. And I took a look at the room size and knowing that we were going to have probably my dad and brother or sister show up, I knew it was too big. And we talked with President Stone, we decided to honor those elementary students at the halftime of the varsity football game earlier in this football season, at halftime the elementary night. So I thought it went very well. It was nice to honor the academic accomplishments of the students at a sporting event. So tonight, we have two different groups. We're going to start with student artwork and with us tonight is Mr. Bauer and Mr. Schiefer, our secondary art teachers. And while some of the students are being recognized for work that they did as a fifth group at the elementary, Mr. Bauer is going to acknowledge them because I think they're now sixth graders and you don't have sixth grade on your schedule yet this year, but we're going to go ahead and recognize the students at this time. So gentlemen.
Hi. Thanks for coming, for being here, and I'm just going to read off some of the names. And like Mr. Campbell said, some of the sixth graders I don't know yet, so forgive me for any mispronunciations. First is Cassie Haycock. For her artwork that she has out there in the hallway, I don't think she's here tonight. The second is Emma McAdams, for her artwork, and I don't think she's here either. Next is Mackenzie Powers for her monochrome watercolor. Mackenzie, come on up here and receive your certificate. Next is Miranda Mee for her painting. Finally, Yusaku Karabayashi for his drawing. Come on up. And then one more is, oh, two more, Bing Jinghe, who is unable to be here, and as well as Hannah Frye, who is also unable to make it tonight. So back to you to the middle schoolers. Mr. Schiefer for the high schoolers. Just hang on for a second.
I have two high schoolers who are being acknowledged tonight, both of which cannot be here. One for a college visit, the other one for a volleyball game. For her work as a sophomore, Sierra Spears with an oil pastel beach scene. And also Emily Howell with a three-piece painting series that she completed as a junior.
Thank you.
Start with me? Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations. Mr. Schiefer. Thank you. Very good. Thanks for having me. Congratulations. Doctor Burke?
Thanks for having me. Thanks for having me. How are you doing? How's your day?
I would like to apologize before we do our next commendation, I want to welcome Mr. Johns. Nate Johns is with us here this evening. He's our new student representative. He'll be with us first semester this school year. And we have a young lady, Kaylee Lewis, will be joining the second semester, but Nate, senior. And it's not his section yet, but I wanted to apologize for the interruption to the front of the meeting. But I know you and Dr. Burke had reviewed the agenda hopefully ahead of time, or at least your section of it. And so, welcome and look forward to working with you through first semester.
Thank you.
Next up, we'd like to have Mrs. showers come up with Lainey Molkoff. And they have a real purpose tonight. We're recognizing Lainey for a community service project that started last year and I believe is carrying over into this school year. So they have a short presentation and then we're going to present her with a commendation for her community service organization.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, very much for having us. Last spring, Lainey Molkoff had an idea for her DECA project that involved the elementary students and the community. With a focus on literacy and community service, her drive and enthusiasm sparkled throughout the whole creation of that project. That being said, it's an honor to introduce one of our rising young Redmond stars, Lainey Molkoff, who's so talented, smart, and a true leader among her peers.
Okay. I chose the Redmond Helpers project. I wanted to create something new that no one has done before in Cyrus. I wanted to make the elementary students feel like they were something bigger than themselves and they were a part of the community even at such a young age. I was hoping that it would come off as a fun experience and maybe involve some academics without them even really knowing it. My purpose was really just to start a youth community service project, to make, have young students feel like they can make a difference in the world or even their community and represent Cyrus in a positive way. My goal was that maybe by the end and maybe if we do more projects, kids will think community service is second nature and they won't think twice when someone asks for their help. And to be a good example for the rest of the school and their friends and even their The event started with registration of 17 kids, which I think is kind of a lot for a first year. They all got T-shirts and gifts at the end. We started by going to the local Cyrus Public Library. We cleaned the outside and we brought down shelves and tables and book stands and did some other activities there. Lunch was provided by Sedexo and we read a story involving helping people and some reading and writing, things that also wrote down how communities work and how they can help others to themselves. We wanted to get a message across that being in a community is also part of being a team. And so we played a lot of teamwork building games to get them kind of used to each other and comfortable with each other. I wanted to recognize the kids in a couple different ways. I gave all of them certificates and gifts at the end of the day. And then on Saturday of the grant receivable, we rode in the parade. I just wanted to make them feel special for what they did. The people who helped make this project possible were Mr. Finagella, Mrs. showers, Mrs. Constantine, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Wall, Mrs. Pennington, Sydney and Tracy Woodrow, Mrs. Hoover and Mrs. Cable, where they helped. Some awesome high school students that helped me out were Preston Ford, Kristen Orweller, Ronnie Adler, Danielle Smith, Kaylee Chester, Kim Adams, Alex Howard, Max Constantine, and Laurel Molkoff. And my future plans are maybe continue this summer, I really want to do that, and maybe with a different theme and a different project, so it's not all the same. And Mrs. Cable has some other projects for me throughout the year that are different than the community service side, but also dealing with the same high school students that helped me out with this. So it started as a community service project, but it's really kind of developing something a little bit more than just community service, which is great. Thank you.
Don't be too hard on me. We're not done yet.
On behalf of Cyrus City Schools and the Board of Education, Lainey, it's my pleasure, and there's two, to give you this certificate of commendation to you for your community service project. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Sure. I was just going to make a statement that I was fortunate enough to go to the elementary school, I keep wanting to call it the middle school, for a little while and saw the kids and they were having a blast. Now, I, my big question is though, I think the class of like 78 was getting ready to take a tour. Did they have to go through the maze and stuff?
Yeah, because they're all confused.
It was good for them. It was good for them. Thank you, Lainey. It was a wonderful project and it was wonderful what you did for our kids. Okay.
Well, you, it is a school night, so if any of you would like to be excused at this time, you're more welcome to. We'd like to get a group picture of all the people that received a commendation tonight. You're welcome to come back in here and sit through the boring part of our meeting, but this was really the highlight of it, so. But if we could everybody out in the front of the foyer to take a picture, that would be great. So thank you for coming.
Okay, I'm going to switch up the meeting just a tad this evening. We're going to go ahead and go on down to item number 10. We're going to go ahead and do our voting and then we'll get back up to do our reports and stuff. So, Mr. Campbell, you want to start us out with personnel certified staff items?
Yes, President Stone members of the board, it's my recommendation that the board approve items A through G under the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
We have a motion to approve items A through G.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. We will go to the personnel classified staff items.
President Stone members of the board, it's my recommendation that the board approve items A through G of the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
We have a motion to approve items A through G again of the personnel classified staff items.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. And we will go to the business items.
President Stone members of the board, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve items A through K under the business section of the agenda.
We have a motion to accept the business items A through K.
So, support.
Any questions or comments?
Just, how concerned are you with item D, the Mid-Ohio Service Contract?
Well, there's a couple pieces there. The way the state is changing the funding for ESCs, we have some supervisory credits that used to go straight to ESC and it would reduce our contract amount because of that supervisory credit. Now, the way the state's changing it now, it comes to our school district. So the costs will be inflated from the dollar amount, but we're going to get that money directly to us now that we can then offset that contract. So that's a piece of it. There is some additional services due to the number of kids that we have qualifying for speech OTPT. Unfortunately, those numbers are climbing, which takes an additional staff to take care of their needs. So there is some additional pieces there. So we do have a piece with the special, or the gifted unit funding that apparently was going to be coming back to us, but now it's still going back to the ESC. So you'll notice in January, when we do a true-up, that that dollar amount for the contract insurance should be less because that will be going to Mid-Ohio. When they set the contract, they weren't sure whether it's going to us or going to Mid-Ohio. So with those pieces right there, you know, I'm not excited about the contract amounts of a lot of money, but there are needed services that they provide. So, thank you.
At some point, and not to dissuade, when I asked Emily Essens-Freisch, I think there was a column that described what fund, the certain things are coming out of, and I don't see that. Does that mean that most of this is coming out of general fund, is some coming out of the special?
No, it's deducted. Most of it's going to come through our foundation payments.
General fund?
Yeah, primarily. There are going to be some that'll come out of targeted assistance and so forth. Still waiting to see how some of this is going to be impacted by House Bill 59 and how those monies are broken down. Don't know yet.
There are some individuals that are outside of our, who got from the foundation that are Mid-Ohio employees, like our family, our family's student advocate. We are working to offset the general fund as much as we can with some other funds to not weigh heavily on general fund, if that's what you're speaking to.
Grant monies don't fully cover.
When we finalize the breakdown between what title's paying for and what's the other council paying for, we'll make sure that we share that with everybody and make sure that they know what council is paying for.
It's like a concern, to think that things were previously paid by some federal grant or state grant and now being shifted to general fund.
Can have a huge impact.
Right. Sure. We can ensure they have that written on something.
Okay.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. Okay, now's a perfect time. And...
Let me get excused.
Yes, you may. Yep. I think we'll go ahead and, yeah, we'll go back to the top and we'll... Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll just go to item number four. Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our August 22, 2013, regular meeting?
Support.
Roll call please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report dated August 31, 2013?
Support.
Okay. Any comments this evening?
I'm going to monopolize quite a bit of time in the discussion sections. I'll just kind of highlight a couple of items. Had a small deficit of around $15,000 during the month, unexpected, not better than it would've been. Continue to monitor that spending. It'll even out over the course of the year. Here, I'm looking at a five-year forecast. Initially, we've got some more tweaks, waiting to see if we can get any final estimates from House Bill 59, but I think we're going to be right around $175,000 deficit projected this year. Turn the corner next year if everything holds pat and be in the red for the first time in a while. I'm forecasting going back into the red the following year, but we're making progress. A lot of this hinges on our state revenue. We'll cover that in more detail with my forecast. Looking, I have three items listed there that, over the coming year, I want to make sure we get taken care of. We're automating our requisition process and focusing hard to become more efficient. Working on our, continue to work on our leave forms. We've drilled down, I think, the system we're going to end up heading towards, getting our computer systems talking together, if you will, with our lunchroom, Power School, and then with our accounting software internal in the office. Again, just to increase efficiencies, looking out, maybe some personal reductions back towards that once we get it in place. We are in the process of replacing our maintenance van. Can't tell you the exact year, but it's well past its useful life and Mr. Grau has issues with it and can't store his needed equipment and tools, so he does a lot of running back and forth between buildings, whereas when this vehicle's replaced, it's going to give him the capacity, the shelving setup, to have basically a mobile maintenance department, if you will, so he can become more efficient.
As we go down our plans that we've been working on tweaking over the last few years as far as the needed maintenance and permanent improvement pieces, the replacement of the maintenance truck is on that list that we, that we talked about. So continually try to cross items off that list and work through it. Making improvements, athletic field improvements, lightings, fencing, asphalt, roof repairs, boiler replacements, all those things we've done, trying to go down through them and take care of them as they come up. And one of the things that are coming up is the replacement of the trucks.
And I want to preface, we're looking at permanent improvement slash maintenance fund monies for that, not anticipating any general fund expenditure for that vehicle at this point. Second, elementary chiller is supposed to come online tomorrow, so hopefully that is good news. Our equipment's taken care of.
Just in time for the summer.
Just in time.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're on the heat came on today.
Oh, at least we know it came on.
That's right. I have one question.
Sure.
When's the next five-year forecast due to come?
October 31st.
So you said you're working on that?
Correct.
And I assume, and I know it's the beginning of a new Pioner budget, we're going to probably get anywhere from $0,000 to $800,000 in the state in increased funds.
Based on our enrollment, it is looking like the initial projection will hold right around $400,000 to $450,000 this year. I believe in fiscal year 15, it's closer to $900,000. A lot of attention on the enrollment. I actually had the opportunity this week to talk with the individual, I hope he tasked with developing the formula, if you will. The formula does not exist. He does not think it will ever exist. He's not even sure how it works. They're trying to back to those initial projections and I think those initial projections, from what they told me, will become the formula, basically.
So it's backwards math?
Yes.
Which always works out well for everyone.
Well, for the legislature.
I was surprised. They kept telling us, first part of October, we'll have something out. Let's start again, July, end of July, August, August, September, October, and then that's this individual.
Just to make it an individual deal with every district in the state?
It'll be all right. I'll be down on a good shoot.
So we can assume that the assumptions in the next five-year forecast will be a little more closer to reality in terms of state funding?
Yes, if everything holds as present. And I will preface, the administration's making it clear, they will go back and do budgetary reviews even in between the Pioner budgets. So if something would change one way or another in the economy, I don't anticipate if the economy improves seeing additional monies, but I think if they see some sort of indication there's a negative trend, they will quickly adjust down. I don't know if that helps.
Yes and no.
That's the message I'm hearing. It's very fluid. It's very difficult to know, is this fixture really going to hold for two winters?
Anybody else? Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. Many reports. Oh, Mr. Schiefer, athletics.
Yes, we do have athletics.
When did that start?
Just past Monday, we had an athletic council meeting and some of the items that were discussed were, we reviewed some of the improvements that have been made out of the athletic complex, skill support, as we're well aware. And also, we talked about the need for, as we discussed in the past, weight room coordinator position. And knowing that those funding can't come out of general fund for those positions, and also the improvements within additional outside rubber industry. So we're looking at Carol White Grant being able to work with Sedexo and formulating that for, I believe, next year. So we're hopeful that we can secure that grant and that would make a huge, a huge shot in the arm for the district in a lot of different ways. The 19th annual reverse raffle is coming up next weekend on October 5th. And again, the VFW, there are still tickets available, $50 apiece, and you can't win if you don't participate. So they're available from any booster member, any, basically, any school person will be able to direct you, you know, to purchase a ticket. Probably athletic office or any of the coaches as well. I understand there's going to be quite a few good door prizes there with signatures from some of the memorabilia, OSU, pieces of equipment and things, and signed by Urban Meyer, and also at that moment. So it should be, it should be a nice time for all and shouldn't be any excuse for anybody not to be there. The Buckeyes do have a night game that time, so they're going to hook up a big screen TV at the VFW, so you'll be able to have a nice evening all around. And with that, tomorrow night is the big Copper Kettle Football Game again. This year, we play Winford at Winford, so hopefully see all of us out at Winford cheering the Redmond on to a victory. So with that concludes my report.
Oh, I went to Pioneer last Monday and it was business as usual this time of year. We did have a lengthy discussion though on how Pioneer's board's going to be made up in the future. Very interesting. I can stay on there. I am still appointed for another year. And they told Glenna at that, at the meeting that she went to, that if she's got anybody on there that is still appointed, they can stay on. So...
You might as well stay on our board then, too. You killed two persons.
There you go. Anyway. Anyhow.
Your plan, first may have to stay.
That's right. New law.
Right. So I told her that I would, I'd be more than happy to stay on for that year. So I will be Cyrus representative for another year. I will do brat a report or whatever, whatever you want.
I'm going to have to change your chairs here.
Okay, so anyway. But that, that concludes my report.
So Sandy, how does that work going forward? Because it is a big change.
It's a huge change. They don't even know. And here, here's the kicker. Here's the kicker. One man was mad because he always wanted to serve on a career board. Now, I don't, and he's, he's now in the Senate or the House, one or the other, and he's the one that got all these changes approved.
Just by catching up to the budget.
Exactly. And in the, in the future, if someone, you can, somebody from this board can go, but you just can't choose whoever you want. They have to have certain criteria to go along with them. And knowing anything about schools is not...
Right, that doesn't count.
It doesn't count for anything. You have to be a CFO or a CEO or you have to, you have to know what the community's looking for job-wise and it's just unbelievable. And it's unbelievable to me that you can have a group sitting around a table, making decisions with public money and not being elected by the public.
Sure.
Yeah, right. You know, it...
Sounds like a Florida charter school.
Isn't it? I mean, it's just, it's just bizarre. I don't know how it's going to work. I don't know how they're going to be able to find people that are going to be willing to do this. They don't, they don't understand in Columbus, well, I guess when they first went to the first meeting, this guy got up, I can't remember who Glenna told me it was, and he said, "Shame on all of you for not getting business and industry in your buildings." And she's like, "They're in our buildings all the time." You know, we have...
They can't create a course without...
Well, exactly. So they don't... Well, exactly. So they don't, they don't even understand the advisory boards, they don't even understand how they work, they're just making the laws, and this is the way it's going to go. So, but since my term, and I don't know how they did that over there, but my term ran from, I think it was a two or a three-year term, and it's not over until 2015. And they said anybody's term over there that runs like that, even if they're not on their own school, they can stay on the board. And I'm like, I feel so bad for them over there, I'm like, okay, I will. Because I mean, you're going to have people that don't understand how schools work at all. And at the end of the day, it's a school.
You're going to give your report video conference?
I think I will. They'll just FaceTime me in. Okay, student achievement, Dr. Johnson.
Nothing really new there, I know that we rolled out some of the report card information at the community meeting. And if you go on the ODE website, they've, I think, done a pretty nice job of making that an interactive, spurred-in format for parents. If they're interested, you can look at it. Sounds like Mr. Henderson's going to update us a bit on that, on the way to receiving, too. That's all I have.
Mr. Merton?
Well, several pieces of information to cover. First and foremost, Ryan will discuss a bit on the Fitbits that was mentioned in an email earlier. In speaking with Lori, we've, the Backpack Program has now received its tax-exempt status, and we're now incorporating. And a couple other issues, Backpack Program still needs volunteers to help with packing, and also shelf stocking for when the, when the food comes in. And in regards to the Wellness Day, they're looking to reformat that. Excuse me, reformat that day. Mr. Schiefer mentioned before the start of the meeting that the Elks Grand Lodge approved a two thousand dollar grant to the Backpack Program. And that just happened today. So thank you for that. And I believe that will do it.
Well, I was here today and helped with the backpacks a little bit, and it takes you maybe thirty to forty minutes out of your day. It's not bad. So, I mean, they've got a system down. It reminded me of, I know I'm going to be, I'm going to be telling my age here, but it reminded me of the old Lucy show, where they were doing the candy on the conveyor belt, I mean, you couldn't keep up sometimes, they, I mean, they've got them a good system going, but it doesn't take, it doesn't take long at all, though. I was not eating food. Okay, Mr. Johns, do you have a report for us this evening?
I would like to say that I think I speak for the student body when I say that the main focus is the Winford game coming up tomorrow, and later on down the road, homecoming is a, a big subject in the school, but as far as the student body goes, I'm like, staying content. Just, well.
Well, good.
That's, that's all I have.
Well, it's nice to have you here, very nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the superintendent's report this evening.
President Stone members of board, I do have Mr. Henderson prepared to share some more in-depth information regarding the report card. Before we do that, I want to speak briefly to the recently released Straight A Fund. I will tell you that we've been spending quite a bit of time looking at this over the last two weeks. The purpose behind the Straight A Fund is to increase student achievement. Number two, to show a spending reduction in the five-year forecast. And number three, utilize a greater share of resources in the classroom. The allotment from Ohio, for Ohio school districts is a hundred million this year, a hundred and fifty million next year. Each school can request up to five million dollars as, as an individual school building or school district, and then consortiums can request up to fifteen million. Some of the possibilities that we're looking at is a partnership with North Central State College to offer free doing enrollment to all of juniors and seniors in mathematics and English classes. Straight A Fund will do the technology piece, we're looking at going for at least four laptop cards, so all those teachers will have technology in the classroom every day for those students. And then the second piece is a Great Lakes grant that is available to colleges and universities to take care of the staff development, for those teachers to incorporate technology into their classroom. Second piece we're looking at is a Mid-Ohio consortium grant. We're looking at some pieces of, potentially looking at a counterwhite STEM possibility, maybe some, we haven't settled on exactly what the direct focus is. They've talked about personal learning plans, they talked about some technology pieces, and college and career exploration and readiness. So we haven't quite settled on what that is, we met earlier this week, Mr. Henderson and I did, for about three hours early in the week, and we have some follow-up meetings next week to solidify that. We're also taking a look at whether there's a grant application we want to try for, just as our, as an individual school district. So timeline is, you have to apply for, the intent to apply done by October 4th, that's been accomplished by our district. It is, as of this morning, there was, there's been three hundred and fifty intent to apply applications already. And then the application, actual application opens up October 14th and closes the 24th of October, so very, very tight timeline. You must use the money before the end of the fiscal year. So it's really tight. It is lottery monies that are earmarked K to twelve, but for some reason, colleges and universities are not a part of that. So it'll be interesting to see, with individual application allowed to be five million dollars consortiums up to fifteen million, how quickly the hundred million will go.
Wow.
Really, from everything that we've been taking part in, webinars, and reading Dick Ross's memos, and people have heard him speak, say, it really needs to be an out-of-the-box plan, and it needs to, you need to be able to show that you're going to be able to cut expenses. So.
I mean, cut expenses with whatever it is you get, right?
Yeah, they want, they want to see the, when the money comes in, that next year, you got to show that you spend less money than you were before.
They want it to be sustained, we get a one-shot infusion of money justifying the reduction in expenditure forward.
Gotcha.
The sample that they showed on, the example they showed on the, on the webinar was, purchased services where it went up, personnel cost went down. So we're looking at all those things, and trying to see, the nice thing is that we can apply in multiple areas, and they're all needed. And I, and the beginning direction that we're already headed, I don't want to chase money, change what we're doing. So if it doesn't fit, even with the Mid-Ohio thing, if they, if they end up deciding with the seven or seven to eight schools that are already together, if it ends up being something that we're not already going on that path, we'll probably not kind of jump on board with them. We'll take a look at those very closely. I, you know, even though I put a short blurb in my email to the, to the teachers, I haven't had anybody approach me, I don't need to get back out and have some conversation with the teachers, and see if they have some ideas that we can do for some of those. And at this point, no other questions on that, I'll turn over to Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel members of board, based on the, some, some of the feedback that we've received at our state of the schools, community meeting, a question was brought up about the report card, and Mr. Kimmel asked me to kind of explain it a little bit more particularly. I'm going to touch on the AMO portion of the report card, and what, Dr. Johnson's right, the, the ODE website is a very nice, user-friendly interface for this report card that shows trend data, it shows how we did, you know, where we scored specifically, what our, what our ratings were, and how those were calculated. What we've done here is printed off all of the, the entirety of the report card, and all the interactive pieces are in this report here. So if you open to the first page, we'll just focus on the district, the district reports, knowing that also in this report, you have the secondary building report, the elementary report, specific to those two buildings and their progress there. So there, there are six areas here that are evaluated in determining our report card measure. And you see the district grade and all the component grades for all of these six sections, that, that's not been released, that's still a work in progress. What we're seeing here now is kind of the, kind of a, an edited version of what it's really going to look like in 2015, and we're learning more and more as the year goes on about how these components are going to be calculated. And for example, if you look at the very first box, the achievement box, it talks about our performance index rating, which was, we had a performance index of ninety out of a hundred and twenty possible points, so that's a seventy-five percent C rating. Indicators, we met twelve out of twenty-four of the tested indicators, and that equates to a D rating. What we'll learn more about is, so what is that, and what will our component grade be? How will they combine those two measures into a component grade? And they'll do all of those things. They'll release that information as we get to, I'll share that with, with the board members and paying attention to that. Moving over to progress, that's the value-added measure, and you can see how we did as a district overall. An overall value added for all of the students, did they make the year's growth? Did they get more than year's growth or less than the year's growth? Overall, we received a C rating there for our gifted students, C rating as well, students with disabilities, a B rating, and then our lowest twenty percent achievement, the C rating as well. Gap closing, I'll, I'll talk more about that specifically, I'm going a little bit greater detail there. Graduation rate, if you look, eighty-six percent of our students graduated in four years, and that, that refers back to the graduating class of 2012, which is not the most current graduating class. And ninety-one percent, ninety-one point six percent of students graduated in five years, also relating back to the class of, graduating class of 2010. K-three literacy component, that, we'll, we'll learn more about that. They, the state will release prior to December 31st of this year, the calculations, and how they're going to figure the K-three literacy grade, all tied back to the third grade reading guarantee. And again, as that information is shared with, with us, the district will share it out with the board members and the community members, so they understand how that will work. And then the prepare for success component, they're still developing that. That relates back to how many kids are college-ready, ready to go to college and pass courses, not having remediation, how many kids are taking AP courses, international baccalaureate, which does not apply to our district, those types of components. What's going to happen for our students after high school? That will be figured into a component grade there. So if you open the, open to the next page, it shows a specific breakdown of the different areas of the report card. Again, the performance index, we have a ninety percent, a ninety out of a hundred and twenty, which is a seventy-five percent of that, of that rating. And it's basically a breakdown, where did our kids score for each of the, on each of the subject area tests? Were they, were they limited, basic, proficient, accelerated, advanced, and advanced plus? And obviously, the more students that we have proficient and above, there's more points weighted for that, those are heavily weighted categories, and so that performance index rises. And if you look down to the next page, the indicators met, it shows that we've met twelve out of the twenty-four that are calculated, which is fifty percent of those, and fifty percent obviously equates to a D rating there, which we're going to be working hard to improve that. Turning the page, it shows the proficiency comparison by grade level, measuring our district performance, our blue, to similar districts, similar demographic size, et cetera, and what was the state average. It shows a breakdown for each of the tested grade levels, and then it shows the trend over on the right-hand column for each of those grade levels, dating back to the 2009 school year. And then flipping through that, you can see all the way to the 10th grade OGT and the 11th grade cumulative OGT. Again, this gives us a lot of good information about how, how we move, have we moved our students, are we increasing over the years? And how do we compare with similar districts to ours and with the state average? On page seven there, the progress component, that's the old value-added measure. And again, we mentioned those early, how, how we scored, if you look in the progress detail. We want to have a lot of green and light green in this area. If that's the case, then our students are growing a year or more, and so that's what we work, that's what we work hard. This also, this component also impacts our annual measurable objective section, which I'm going to get into here. So if at any point you have any questions, please go ahead and ask them, and try to move here as quickly as possible, but give me the information that you're, that you're looking for. Now, if you turn to page nine and fourteen, the gap closing, obviously, that's, we received an F as a district for that, our annual measurable objective points, forty-two point eight percent. This is, this is in place of, this is the component that's added through the ESEA waiver, this replaces the annual yearly progress or the AYP measure. And this is the gap closure measure, this is how are we giving kids that are below, that aren't meeting proficiency, are we moving the kids that are below proficiency level within each subgroup closer to the proficiency level? And what the state has done is they've set what's called an annual measurable objective, and that's a percentage cut score, for lack of a better term, that we have to have that percentage of students in our district proficient in reading, mathematics, and graduation rate. For our district, there, there are ten subgroups total that, throughout the state that you can qualify for. If you have thirty or more kids district-wide in that subgroup, then they, they connect an annual measurable objective that's figured in this calculation. For our district, there are four subgroups, all students, everybody, right now, the state has us listed with thirteen hundred and eighty-eight students in the district. Our economically disadvantaged students, our students that are on IDPs, and white students. So those are the four subgroup components, and those are the four subgroups that are calculated here. And basically, I can mention earlier, it's reading, math, and graduation rate, and if you look on page nine and fourteen, it shows the red line, if you look at the reading box, the red line represents eighty-three point four percent. That, and we need to have eighty-three point four percent of our kids in those subgroups proficient on the various tested areas, which last year was seventy-five percent. That increases to eighty-five percent this year on OGT and LAA tests that we're going to be taking this current school year. This year for thirteen and fourteen school year, that, that red line moves up to eighty-four point nine percent. In other words, these students in these four subgroups, we have to have eighty-four point nine percent of them meet the proficiency standard, which is eighty percent on all of those subgroups, okay? Now, the challenging part is, if you look at our, the green box, that's our students with disabilities. And in reading, forty-seven point one percent of our students with disabilities are proficient or better on reading. And what they're asking us to do, if we want to get the highest grade possible here, is move a kid, those forty-seven point one percent kids, we need to get eighty-four point nine percent of them to be proficient. That's, so that's what they're asking us to do. In reality, there are other, there are other steps that we can reach to get, to get a high rating, to close the gap, okay? So they're not really, it, it's nearly impossible to move that, to make that big of a jump in one year with a stu, with our special ed population. So what they are asking us to do is close that gap, make it, make it closer. So where we fell short this year is in mathematics, our proficiency rating from last year decreased compared to the year before. So when they calculated the annual measurable objectives, we did not get any points in the math proficiency. And I would have, I would give you the, from the secure data center, there's a gap closing report for Visar City School, but I have mine all marked up here, and I'd be more than happy, once that secure data center opens up again, printing that off and giving, so you can see where the percentages are. But basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get that, get these subgroups closer to the annual measurable objectives, getting more of our students proficient. If we can improve students to, to extent, extent that the gap between proficiency and where they perform is less than, or the improvement is greater than the gap, then we can still receive an, an A rating in this, in this area, even if we do not hit the proficiency standard. What that means would be, if we were to do that simply for not asking our teachers to move all these kids that are with IDPs to that proficiency level of eighty-four point nine percent in reading, what that would require us to do, to close... nine percent in reading, what that would require us to do, to close that gap, is for all of our student population, we ask three kids per grade level across the district to, to become proficient in reading. That's twenty-one kids total, that would, that would be, that's what we're aiming for this year. And what I've done is I've taken the, I've taken the OAA results and the OGT results and kind of targeted who those kids are, specifically targeting on which of our students are on IP who are with one or, within one or two questions from past CD OAA or OGT. For, for math proficiency, in order to close that gap, we have to move seven feet kids across the district. That's two, that's basically two kids per grade level, knowing that we need to, we need to show growth from how we performed this year, but we also need to close that gap. How we're going to attack that challenge this year is obviously, we're in the Ohio improvement process, we're in the second year of the cycle. And specifically, we have reading and math goals, and what we're asking, what we've written in there is, we want to decrease the number of students who are non-proficient by ten percent each year over the course of, over this current OIP cycle. So we're going to look at, we're going to look at how we did last year achieving that goal. And within that context, we have our TPT structure, our weekly TPT meetings at the building. We have teachers and principals that are getting, that are, that are meeting, they're collaborating, writing SLOs for the student growth measure on the Otis, and within the Otis framework. We're setting up growth plans with those teachers, targeting, and there's a, there's a goal that you have to establish with that teacher, you collaborate with them, what are your student achievement goals for the group of students that you're working with? And a lot of teachers are focusing on reading and mathematics, those that teach those content areas. And then also, within the TPT structure, Deb Hoover and I are going to a, an assessment literacy training sponsored by Patel for kids, and we're looking at developing high-quality, purposeful assessments that really gauge, really, first of all, challenge kids and give you the information that you need to really know where they are. So we're going to look at that, Deb and I are going to that training, and then we're going to turn that over to our teacher leaders and invite some of them to attend a similar training over in mid-Ohio. And through those three kind of directions that are all aligned to the same goal, which is student achievement, we're going to try to do our very best to close this gap with these subgroups, particularly our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students. The other component to this is graduation rate, and if you turn to graduation rate on page ten of fourteen, again, the class of 2012, eighty-six percent graduation rate there. The annual measurable objective for twelve thirteen was seventy-five point nine percent, so we, we were above the AMO last year for that graduating class. The class of 2011, again, ninety-one point six percent was the graduation rate of those, of those students, again, above the, above the annual metro objective. For this year, for this year, and referring to the class that, that just graduated, we want seventy-eight point two percent of those students to graduate, which we, we were able to hit that mark this year as well. So graduation rate, we did well on, obviously, by 2017, eighteen, the state expects a ninety percent graduation rate for all students in your subgroups, and that's what we're working towards at the secondary building. And so this is the, this is the piece that, this annual measure objective, that we really focus our energy here, and our efforts, and our improvement efforts here, that's going to kind of spread out to impact all the other areas of this report card as we work through it through 2015, when we see the, all the component grades and all the calculations figured to give the final, the final look of what the state has laid out for this district report card. So no longer will we get designations of excellent and excellent with distinction, you're going to be given a letter grade. And a lot of information to, to kind of digest there. Are there any questions I can answer?
With regard to students with disabilities?
Yes, sir.
Those students are required to take the OGTs and OATs, but they're not required to pass them for graduation, is that still correct?
That is still correct.
You think that has any influence on the passing rate?
Yeah, and then we're, we're talking about, you know, I guess it depends on how that message is delivered, you know, if we're telling them, you don't have to pass the, the OGT or OAT for graduation, just do your very best, all you have to do is take the test and show that you've taken it, then you can graduate. If that's the message that, that we're giving, then maybe, maybe that is having an impact on it. But I think from the work that Mr. Scheller is doing, Dr. Burke, when he was in his role in the teachers, the intervention specialists, that's, they take it very seriously, that they work very hard to get those students to pass, is evidenced by the fact that our value-added ratings are very, are very, are relatively good with student disability rating in there. But we have a lot of kids on IP that are one question, or even in some cases, scoring three ninety-nines, which would, in some cases, were just a piece of a question, if they would have got another part of the question correct, they would be marked as proficient, they would have scored a passing rate on there. So I think the, I think that, yeah, the students are aware of that message, but that's not, that's not the work that our intervention specialists and teachers are doing with those kids.
That's, that is not really brought up until their senior year, and that's usually at the end, we're having their review of their career. We tell students that you have to take these, and you have to do the interventions, and we invite them, and they take the summer OGTs, the summer OGT interventions. And so that, at least I know the last, you know, three or four years, it, it's been stressed that this is not just come and put your name on it, and no, it's stressed you need to do well, you need to pass these. And for the most part, we have very, I'd say very few, I can only think of two students last year that, that had to be waived, you know, or exempted from a test, they usually can't get those passes.
What's the current percentage of students with disabilities in our student population?
According to the, the tested kids, twenty-four percent. Now, overall district, I think it's a little slightly less now, but twenty-four based on.
But when you think about that, seventy-five percent of them have to pass to be, to get that, or component, that's, that's whatever, right?
And now it's eighty percent this year.
Right, so this is a significant piece of that equation. Back when I grew up in special education, because a long time ago, the emphasis was on directly instructing those students in the skill areas to need instruction. We kind of moved, I think, from that to a more inclusionary model, where typically you've got a regular teacher and a special teacher co-teaching in a regular classroom. And I think there's a benefit to that, I do, especially social. But is there any evidence, according to data, that it's producing better achievement results for those students than some of the more direct instruction approaches to serve those students?
I, I have, we do have, in the, there are some self-contained classrooms still at the secondary building. I have not disaggregated the data with those students, we know who those students are and compare it there. Either are they showing year's growth, or are they meeting the proficiency standard? I have not disaggregated the data to look at that, that student population to be able to answer that question right now. We can certainly look at that, though.
One wonders, is more direct instruction appropriate for some of these students than giving them an inclusionary classroom?
And that's what, I think, at least, also for the secondary, we do try to offer those opportunities for direct instruction, especially in math and reading and language arts, because those seem to be the areas that the kids struggle the most. And so if a student would benefit from more direct instruction, that component is available, and then being able to be flexible with the schedule that they can be inclusionary for social studies or science, or maybe to those other electives, and then being able to structure the high school differently. Our intervention specialists are with our regular ed teachers primarily at one time, without, without being split between two or three different rooms at once, which has allowed a better inclusionary setting, but also allows time for pull-up direct instruction.
It would be interesting to get some data, see what.
And I do, I mean, I was at a meeting, gosh, yesterday, I'm going to check my days, even at the middle school level, all the intervention specialists were together, and they were actually looking at scores. I mean, it's really, that part's working. It was data-driven, which kid do we need to push a little more, you know, inclusionary? Which kid maybe would benefit from self-contained, because the overall goal, the state monitor's really least restricted environment.
Right.
As much of a regular education as possible, with the aspect that our job is to move those kids forward regardless of their disability. And they really, the other day, and even some teachers come up individually, let's look at this kid, I think he would benefit, yeah, it's going to be a little tougher for him, but we'll move him forward more, which directly, I think, would result in, you know, better rates on our.
And that's a good point, the annual metro objectives, don't get me wrong, there is still benefit for growth, not, even if we don't meet the standard, the AMO percentage, that, there is still, there is still weight given to growth, which is demonstrating, again, that would impact, if it's a year's growth, the more that will impact our value-added scores, but also impact and influence this rating on the report card, which ultimately what it boils down to, are we doing the very best job of teaching our kids? And that's, that's, that's the question we're going to, that's the challenge with this, with this particular part of the report card.
And I appreciate the fact that the mantra is least restricted environment for everybody, but the law says acts must stand appropriate in a regular class, as it's appropriate, and sometimes we.
And that's why, I really think, and you know, as I'm learning in this new world, they really do look at, I mean, individualized education plan, and not just waiting for the annual review when it comes up to say, okay, now what can we do with, you know, Jovi? No, this time is, even now, what's best for him, that we're only four weeks into the year, they're already looking at how can we best move this kid forward, how can we, it's always the interest, what is best student for the student, you know, what's in the best interest of the student, you know, moving them forward, but challenging them at the same time. So, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have anybody who wants to address the board this evening?
Oh, just silly, go on.
Okay. We will go on back then to item thirteen, discussions. I know we've kind of played games with our. Go ahead, you're still, with our agenda this evening. Omar's termination letter.
All right, I will take over item A. Gosh, let me, let me go back in time here, back to when I started with partially self-funded and consortium model with Omaraes, which, which has worked successfully for the district. Emphasize that, why not? Came in here, rolled up my sleeves, started attending the meetings, and last spring arrived at our renewal with Omaraes. At that meeting, I was given the two options, Medical Mutual, which I wanted to see, because we made the decision to break away from them previously that fall, and Cigna, which we were currently, Cigna came in at about two percent increase, Medical Mutual zero. Started scratching my head, digging in, why did we make this move? The Medical Mutual was wanting everyone to utilize their TPA versus self-funded plans with Omaraes. So I started to ask a few questions, and at this meeting, they discussed that everybody's renewal was favorable, everybody's rated on their own, ours was two percent or zero, which is attractive, very good. And then during the course of the meeting, they made the comment that the internal pool went up six percent. Okay, let's see if this raises any eyebrows. Nobody asked any questions. Sat there, and I thought, wow, our renewal's not actually zero or two percent, it's those plus the internal pool of six, so it's really eight or six. Again, nobody's asking any questions, everybody's just in the business model, which has worked with built reserves. So decided to roll up my sleeves, dive into this further, asked for a copy of our contract so that I could just take a look at things. They very graciously sent me the contract. Upon receipt of the contract, I noticed that it was only signed by the treasurer, line for board president. Okay, well, this is, this is intriguing, odd, I'll dig in a little further. Contract is indeed, as I just said, only signed by the treasurer in Omaraes, board president line blank. In the contract, there's a provision that if we want to make a change or leave Omaraes, it requires a six, but not more than eight-month notice. I fell off my chair. The problem with that is, the healthcare is pretty fluid, and we have the ability with our model to adjust and tweak. However, if we find a fully funded option out there that is better, I have to give Omaraes six to eight months worth of notice. I have no earthly way of knowing what our claims are going to be six to eight months out, and Medical Mutual, United, Anthem will never give me a quote six to eight months out and commit, it's just unheard of in the industry. So basically, I found we had a document that had restrictions in it that basically married us to Omaraes. I don't want to say indefinitely, because you could work within that window, but it's very dicey. So my recommendation was, in the spring, we shift back to Med Mutual, obviously, it was cheaper, around fifty-six thousand dollars. We align with their TPA, which removes another tentacle with Omaraes and self-funded plans. So I'm trying to unwind things at that point in time, because I can see down the road potential issues. Had some issues with our broker, just not aggressive, we don't have an HR staff here, we don't have a lot of time to deal with those issues day to day. Put another broker in place, found out he had worked with a counterpart of mine in another district and had saved them substantial sums of money. Again, continue to do my due diligence. Actuarially, we had one point one million dollars in our plan at the time approximately, and we needed to have around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves. So knowing where I was potentially heading with this, and the restrictive contracts and penalties if you did not hit their six to eight month window, I called Omaraes and said, you know what, guys, I've got excess reserves here, I need my money back, board's going to do a transfer, we need our money back, period. Wouldn't allow me to do it. Really irritated me to put it behind me. What they would allow me to do was a premium holiday. Here I had a dilemma. We don't have anything on our union contract that says we have to share a premium holiday with the union. However, they do pay a portion of the insurance. So if I exercised that option, what that means is we don't have to pay a premium for that particular month. They wanted to do things the difficult way, which was not unexpected. So I said, okay, I'll take my premium holidays, but we're going to do three months of them instead of one. So we have been taking premium holidays from Omaraes to bring cash back, meaning we're not paying a monthly premiums to Omaraes. We've continued to pay both the board share and the employees have paid their share, only because I think that's the fair thing to do, I don't think we should benefit from that unilateral. We have the flexibility, but I just didn't think it was a good call to go on. So we've continued to build that money back, we will have approximately five hundred and somewhat thousand dollars on our books in the O two four fund after the next deposit's made. So instead of fighting with Omaraes over one point one million dollars, I've insulated myself with approximately half of that figure. Then I zigzagged back to this contract, and I thought, man, there's, there's just no way this is, this is kosher, this contract really doesn't exist for more than a year. So I tore through the minutes. There is board discussion and treasurer's report regarding the contract, which is fine, I mean, I do a lot of things in my treasurer's report. Omaraes took that as fact that the contract was approved because the treasurer's reports voted on. Problem is, their own contract asks for a specific resolution authorizing it, and I thought, oh, boy, you guys have really screwed up on this baby here. So I looked at this as my out, and I thought, I'm going to pounce. But I've got to shop and find out what are the options out here, fully funded, what other consortiums, start counting, et cetera. Talked with our broker, talked to some other districts, kind of zeroed in on the OSBC consortium on Musquiam Valley ESE. Thought, this makes sense, give me a quote, let's take a look. They have a thirty-day notice for their consortium, it costs five hundred dollars to get in, when you leave, you get your five hundred dollars back, they require thirty days' notice. Very comfortable with that in the healthcare world, that's very typical. So if we were to decide we want to go somewhere else down the road, we just give our thirty days' notice and you leave, I don't have all these windows to hit and contractual obligations with penalties, they just don't exist in this consortium. The second model that I like with this consortium is, I will hold the reserves on our books, I will, will not have to call Omaraes to say, hey, give us our funds back, we hold them here. So if we decide we need to do something with those. them here, so if we decide we need to do something with those funds, it simply takes board actions to do a transfer from the O two four to whatever, for whatever purpose at that point in time. So we have control over this. We still maintain our partially self-funded plan, which is working well, and with this new consortium will work better. I have provided you with a quote that was effective ten-one, which was kind of my nuclear option, if you will, with Omarisa. They've basically backed down, because at the end of the day, they don't have a contract and they know that. The question is, who's gonna spend money to fight this? The answer is not us. They, fortunately for us, had Pepel and Wagner as their legal counsel as well, Brent, Brent Many had been their attorney for, I'm gonna say thirty years, this guy had everything on this consortium. So due to the conflict with that, we were able to knock their legal counsel out, which left them in a big bond, because he had everything. So they're gonna have to spend a fortune to update their new counsel. New brokers had some connection to Taft Law Firm in Cleveland, wrote a beautiful expose, if you will, explaining why this contract is non-avoidant. Spoke with Sandy, she's shared with me and Mr. Ratliff at City Law Director Usciris, get in touch with him. Talked with Mr. Ratliff, updated him on everything that's taken place, shared with him, Taft Law Firm's letter, he said, yeah, these guys don't have to like to stand on, move, it's too much money. So at the end of the day, after a lot of pleasant phone calls, emails, these guys love me to death, we have the ability to leave Omarisa. We could execute it on ten-one, which is four days from now approximately. I think that is a last resort at this point. We've worked with Medical Mutual, they are willing to extend the same quote that we have here within plus minus one percent, they just didn't have time today to generate the exact quote for me for January one recall, they're trying to bake in some trend in case we experience losses, et cetera, between now and then. The savings that we have between OSBC and Omarisa is approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. It's, it's a huge, huge savings. Coverages will not change at all, our existing plan that we have with Omarisa will be mapped over, because again, Omarisa's not the network, they're just the consortium that holds the funds. Medical Mutual has our plan designs, when we flip the switch, if the board authorizes it for January one, our plan will already exist, will be over at the OSBC consortium. I could push this through, rush it, force you guys into saying, yeah, let's go ten-one, there, there's a secondary piece of this that will benefit both the employees in the district, as the savings will, our prescription drug piece. Right now, with CVS Caremark, which is working well, um, I, I don't hear a lot of complaints on it. With OSBC, we have the option to go to Express Scripts. OSBC and Medical Mutual both like Express Scripts, because the reimbursements on the drug plan are substantially higher. What that means for us is, when you go to the pharmacy to buy whatever drug, these companies have reimbursements that they will send back to health plans. Typically, we don't see those in a fully insured environment, since we're self-funded, those will flow back through to us. So this, this, if the board would authorize it tonight, gives us the chance to examine Express Scripts, save additional monies on the prescription side as well. The key thing here is, yes, the quote's gonna save us three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I feel very confident that that is extremely conservative. The employees will share in that as well, they pay their portion of it, we do have, um, negotiations ongoing, don't know the results or outcome, everyone's gonna share in the savings, because the portion they pay as well, when we flip this switch, if we switch, is gonna trickle down as well. Obviously, the board pays the largest share, we're gonna benefit from the largest portion of that, which will, in terms of the five-year forecast, help the bottom line and free up additional monies for other operational expenditures in the general fund. It's a, it's, it's a move that I don't make lightly, it's been discussed, I'm gonna say for six months probably at a minimum, um, I don't think, in fact, I know if Omarisa had their i's dotted and t's crossed on this, we would be facing penalties of six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to make this move, just as an example, we would lose a lot of our reserves. We wouldn't have this discussion, we wouldn't bring it to you, because it just would make no financial sense. Because of the, the depth of work that we dove into to find this, we have an out, they know it, and they've agreed not to fight it. I had a conference call this afternoon, we kinda finished wrangling with them, and what we have agreed to in principle, if the board of education approves it, is we're gonna have a separate motion tonight authorizing us to leave Omarisa effective twelve thirty-one for a one-one start with OSBC. Omarisa will hold no penalties, they will not withhold any of our reserves, I've negotiated with them to get, depending on how our claims run, because again, we're self-funded, if, if the pile of monies still build up, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that released in January, just to kind of powder reserves and help fund OSBC as we move forward. We already have half a million sitting there, so we're solid, I'm not worried about it. Then, within sixty days, House Bill fifty-nine has changed how consortiums work as well, they have to fully release the remaining reserves that we have after claims are paid, what they would call run-out. I've negotiated with OSBC, since we have Medical Mutual, Medical Mutual has agreed to handle our run-in claims, those that would be coming from our old plan to our new. So in effect, I've insulated Omarisa from any liability of claims through Medical Mutual under our old plan, the new plan's going to absorb those. The one-one date also works effectively because of the switch from Cigna to Medical Mutual, because run-out can take six months, most of our claims are cleaned up and off of the books. So Medical Mutual is happy, because everything that could've been out there with Cigna has peeled off and there's no issues. Long and the short is, they have a contract that I think if we wanted to push the issue, we would, without a doubt, win, they know that, they're gonna fold, um, they don't like me, they don't like that we've done this, they're not happy that this is taking place, but they understand the necessity. Their chairman of the board, Dr. Ash, from Jefferson County ESC, been a great guy to work with, um, he actually left Omarisa at one point in time with another district, so he understands the position we're in and what this money does to us long-term. I'm glad I reached out to him, because it, that was a very smart move, he's been great to work with. Burns and Soling has been difficult at best. I think at the end of the day, it's, it's a phenomenal one for the district, uh, we're not gonna spend any legal fees on this, they've agreed to basically give me what I want. I did involve the Department of Insurance, their enforcement unit, because of the fact that this contract is very punitive and does not allow anyone to make this move that's in their best interest, it clearly benefits Omarisa. In addition to that, I have worked with the auditor of state through the Department of Insurance, and they are working on jurisdiction through their investigative unit, because of our contractual situation, to potentially recover fees that were paid. No guarantees on that, I'm not sure I'm gonna continue to hold the knife to the jugular on these guys, because they've given us what we want. But the state is very intrigued by this, concerned as well, so what they do with it is, is fine, they've let us out, they're gonna let us out if we decide as a district it makes sense. That's kind of the long but abbreviated version of what it's been like the last six months with insurance. Questions?
Sounds like a good deal for the district. How will it affect on the employee?
I'm glad you asked. Transitioning January one, well, what's gonna happen, our, our plan coverages will stay the same. Employees will receive a new medical card from Medical Mutual, our group number's gonna change. If we decide to switch to Express Scripts from CBS, they'll get a new drug card as well. Ultimately, they get a new drug card either way, because the one we have now has Omarisa stamped on it, so that, the group number's gonna change from OSBC to Omarisa. Other than that, they should notice no impact, because we have time to make the transition. Medical Mutual, literally, I am to call them tonight at whatever time and let them know if I'm gonna flip the switch, ten-one or January first, they've been great to work with. I think Snap Blues will be typical, um, no different than what we would have now with Omarisa, they'll get a different card to mail. We have time to prepare for that now. I was concerned if we would vote on this tonight, decide we go ten-one, everything's mapped over, they're covered, but they don't have their new cards and employees are gonna be sitting there thinking, who is this idiot doing this stuff? And quite frankly, I don't blame them, because they just don't understand all the behind the scenes. So I, I'm comfortable with, I guess, the terms we've reached with Omarisa, I don't see any impact to employees, their claims are still gonna be paid, because again, we made the decision way in advance of telegraphing any place to them to go to Medical Mutual, lock in the TPA and the network, so we, we are insulated. Medical Mutual is our team regardless of which side of the fence we're on, so that, that was, I guess, a shrewd move, if you will, um, to minimize that collateral damage, when and if this ever happened.
So sometimes employees experience difficulty with this run-in, run-out pipeline, we change plans, is that gonna be an issue with this?
No.
But, but Medical?
No, it shouldn't be any issue because of that fact, because of the fact that Medical Mutual is our network. Where we ran into problems in the last, let's say, three months or so, we changed from Cigna to Medical Mutual, so we had to let Cigna process the claims through seven-one and then anything after seven-one goes Medical Mutual. Where we had a problem, sometimes, I did it, my wife did it, you forget to tell the doctor, oh, I changed plans, will they bill Cigna when you're at Medical Mutual? That'll be a non-issue, because we are on Medical Mutual right now. So I, I tried to position as, yes, there was financial incentive in the spring to do this, but also ultimately knowing I needed to have a seamless integration, it makes sense all the way around, if this potentially ever happened. It's crazy, but it's been fun, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm tired, it's worn me out, but...
It's been fun.
What you want.
Day in the life.
You won.
Enjoy it.
We won, that's good.
Being an outside looking in, close to, I know the struggles that Ryan's went through the last few months and, uh, we're at a point, uh, you know, because of the potential, well, the savings that are on the table for us, I think we're left to have another choice to make, that's my recommendation. And, you know, Ryan is, uh, he commended for playing hardball, basically, to fight our funds that are ours, you know, I just don't, if me penalized necessarily as such as six hundred thousand dollars of our money, school district money, this is ridiculous.
Home money.
Home money. So for them to back off and basically say, if you work with us, give us, uh, not a ten-one note...